Everyone, tonight is Tuesday, September 3, 2019. I'd like to call the Fitchburg City Council to order. Please be advised that FATV is conducting audio and video recording of this meeting for public broadcast. I would ask that anyone in the audience who is recording this meeting, please identify themselves by standing and stating their name and address at this time. Is there any such person? Seeing none. Counselor Caddy, would you please lead us in the salute to the flag?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please conduct the roll?
President Kushner.
Present.
Counselor Boishman.
Happy to be back.
Counselor Clark. Counselor Dina Tally.
Here.
Counselor Donnelly.
Yep.
Counselor Fleming.
Here.
Counselor Green.
Here.
Counselor Caddy. Counselor Squalia.
Present.
Counselor Walsh.
Here.
Counselor Zarella.
Here.
Public forum. Anyone wishing to speak on any matter on the agenda may do so for not more than two minutes. If you are here addressing public hearing petitions, you'll have an opportunity to speak at that time. Please approach the center table and identify yourself by name and address for the record and the item on the agenda which you are addressing. Does anyone wish to speak at this time? Ms. Cervantes, I know you're here addressing a suspension of the rules on an order. If you'd like to do so now, we can send you home early.
So it's Order 211-19, which is a rescinding of the excess debt for the construction of the Airport Administration Building and other projects that went along with that. This $724,000 is just an excess authorization that's not needed since the project is finished.
Vote for suspension of the rules on 211-19?
I have a motion and second for suspension of the rules on 211-19. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The matter is before you.
Vote to approve 211-19?
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve 211-19. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Motion carries. Is there anyone else wishing to speak at this time during public forum? Seeing none, if there are no objections, we'll now hear an oral report from the Appointments Committee, which met earlier this evening, September 3, 2019. Took up the following matters. We had three reappointments. First for the Board of Registers of Voters, for Ms. Joanne Hughes, for term to expire April 1, 2022. The next for the Planning Board, term to expire September 1, 2024, of Ms. Amanda Keck, who's with us this evening. And the next for the Conservation Commission, term to expire January 1, 2021, of Mr. John Cordio. Those were voted unanimously. And now we have new appointments. The first three for the Fitchburg Cultural Council, all terms to expire September 1, 2022, of Ms. Audrey Pendleton Chow, Ms. Jessie Olson, and Ms. Eileen K. Berger, who are also with us this evening. Thank you so much for being here. And lastly, we had Board of Licensed Commissioners, term to expire April 1, 2024, to fill the balance of the term of Ms. Donna Pollak, and that's for Mr. Richard J. Boskaden, who is also with us this evening.
Move to approve the Appointments Committee report?
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve the Appointments Committee. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Motion carries. I'd like to thank those new appointees who will be joining our boards and commissions. Thank you for your service. Moving forward on the agenda, we'll now hear a report from the Committee on Records. Counselor Donnelly.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have reviewed the records, the report, and they appear to be in order. Move to approve the Committee on Records report.
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve the Committee on Records report. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Motion carries. Communications from his honor, the mayor. We have two letters of reappointments. The first for Ms. Tracy Betz-Sarafield, as a member of the Conservation Commission, term to expire on January 1, 2022. And the second for Mr. Harry Karas, as a member of the Conservation Commission, term to expire January 1, 2022. We also have six letters of appointment for Mr. Jamie Darkangelo, as a member of the Human Rights Commission, term to expire September 1, 2022. Mr. Adam Stone, as a member of the Human Rights Commission, term to expire September 1, 2022. Mr. Jared Roy, as a member of the Fitchburg Redevelopment Authority, term to expire September 1, 2024. Mr. Se Goodlett, as a member of the Fitchburg Cultural Council, term to expire September 1, 2022. Of Ms. Mary Helene, as a member of the Conservation Commission, term to expire September 1, 2022. And for Mr. Timothy J. Stewart, as a permanent reserve police officer for the city of Fitchburg.
Vote to be sent to appointments.
Second.
I have a motion and second to send the reappointments and appointment letters to the Appointments Committee. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Motion carries. Next on the agenda, we have the Ad Hoc Committee on Rules, meeting of August 22, 2019. Counselor Zarella.
So we met in the mayor's office at 6:30, 6:32. And if it's all right with everyone, I'm not going to read the actual report itself because it's a lot of delete this line, add this line, and it's all reflected in the packets that you've received. What we basically did was we organized this into six revisions. The first one, which you'll see labeled "one of six current," is literally just what the current rules are. We don't need to take any action on that. It's there for reference. What I would like to recommend to the council and move is that the council vote to receive the report as a communication and then vote separately on the six revisions, or rather, the five revisions, rather than on the report as a singular whole. So moved.
I have a motion and second. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Motion carries.
So, beginning with the current version, the second segment labeled "two of six reorganized" is literally what it says. All we did was we took the existing rules, didn't change them at all, but reshuffled them into organized sections so that it's clear what each purpose is and you can find your rules, rather than having to jump from the beginning to near the end, to somewhere in the middle, to find what rules apply to a given thing. I'm willing to yield for a question if...
Counselor Dina Tally.
Just clarification. So counsel, you're saying that this, no changes in Part II, just a reorganization of existing Part I?
Right. It is technically a change to the rules, but it doesn't change anything about what the rules do or what they mean.
So I would make a motion to accept version, revision two of six.
Second. I have a motion and second to accept revision two of six. Speaking on the motion. Counselor Green.
I just want to make a note that when it's marked in red, we are, we're crossing that out. We're eliminating that, correct? And either replacing it or adding to with, in yellow.
May I? That is correct. And in version two of six, anything that you see deleted in red is simply moved somewhere else in yellow. Nothing is actually being stricken in terms of operative language. For example, in 1.6 here, in the first page of Section 2, that has been moved to...
3.9.
3.9. It's exactly the same text. It's just been moved from one spot to another.
Thank you.
I have a motion and second to accept revision two of six. Speaking on the motion, Counselor Donnelly.
Thank you, Mr. President. It doesn't have so much to do on the rules, but my understanding is the word "council" is spelled with two L's and is inconsistent even in this report. And there are people that are running for office that have it with one L. There are departments that send notices with one L. And the charter is with two. Is that correct?
So, Counselor, yes, you're correct. The charter refers to it as two, but the common accepted, the common accepted is usually one L at this point.
Well, if you go to MMA, it's spelled with two. So, I mean, it's just inconsistent. Are we going to be consistent? Are we going to be consistently inconsistent?
Counselor...
I know it's a minor point, but when you start to add it up, it's an inconsistent city.
We actually addressed this in the committee. Counselor Zarella.
Yes. Honestly, the committee had decided to go with one. If there are two in here, it's because I missed it when I was typing it, to be honest. But we all agreed that it didn't make a difference to us. So if the counselor would like, I would offer an amendment to version two of six and all subsequent versions to replace all instances of the word "counselor" with the word "counselor" spelled with two L's.
Actually need a vote.
Are we going to one?
Counselor, I'm just questioning whether or not we even need a vote. It is a simple find and replace when it's finally then sent back to the counselors. So...
You've been using two.
We've been using two.
So you're not really changing anything.
Okay. We've been using two, so we're not really changing anything when the document is redistributed back out to the council. We'll revert back to the two L's.
Thank you.
That way, we don't have to amend subsequent versions as well. If that works for everyone. All right. That said, I have a motion and second to accept revision two of six. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Motion carries.
Moving on to three of six, and I do want to call out the fact that each of these revisions is a revision of the previous revision. So when you look at three of six, it incorporates everything that was already done in two of six and so on. But version three of six is, again, exactly what it says, clerical fixes. There are missing commas, extra commas, misspellings, missing words, just the kind of things that accumulate over years of copying and recopying the rules. Again, there are no substantive changes in three of six. It does absolutely nothing to change what rules we play by here.
Vote to accept revision three of six.
Second.
I have a motion to accept revision three of six. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Motion carries. Counselor Zarella.
Four of six is the first one that sort of changes things, but not really. What it does primarily, it rewords a few things for clarity, and it puts in some new verbiage to match the rules to what we already do. In other words, there are certain things that we do as a council that everyone accepts, but that are technically not in line with the way the rules are currently written. Version four of six attempts to bring the rules as written into line with what we actually do as a council. And I'd be willing to yield for questions.
I am. Counselor Squalia.
Why in version four of six are we striking the his or her kind of designations and only going with his male pronoun?
If I may. Basically, this is very standard in legal writing. Writing his or her, him or her, he or she, over and over throughout a document bulks it out and makes it hard to read. And so if you look at statutes, or I'm sure the city solicitor or Counselor Walsh could confirm for me, if you look at statute, statutory language, or any form of formal drafting, it's very common to see something like what you see in 1.1 here, a clause that simply says that pronouns are not intended to actually mean anything gender-specific. We're just going to pick one and use it because it's simpler. That being said, personally, I would be perfectly willing to entertain an amendment to alter it to she instead, if that is preferred. It's just a simplification.
And I'll add to that. I had expressed concern with keeping his or her with pronouns, particularly in Massachusetts beginning to change and expand fairly rapidly beyond his and her. We looked at what may come over the next decade and saw that we would be constantly revising. And if we didn't go with something that was neutral across the board, we're going to be constantly revising and, by its very nature, excluding folks who aren't mentioned by their preferred pronouns.
So if we use the pronoun "they" or "their," would that substitute for, because we've struck out only the "she's" and kept everything as a male pronoun? It just seems, I don't know, seems more gender-neutral to use "they" or "their," perhaps?
Counselor Zarella.
I have absolutely no intrinsic objection, but from a drafting standpoint, using a plural pronoun implies that we're talking about more than one person. And in a draft, in something like this, that can actually matter, as opposed to in conversation where using the so-called singular "they" is not likely to confuse anyone.
Counselor Green.
In addressing that specifically, could we not get away with language of any such person? Clearly, we've identified in one of one whatever gender shall refer. So if we had to choose or make it more vanilla, neutral, or sweetened, any such person could take the place of his, her, they, them. And it's, I mean, I have no partiality. It's just, again, consistent, consistency.
I'm just as comfortable. I'd be happy to switch to all feminine across the entire document, whichever this body prefers and feels is most consistent throughout its entirety. That's it. Counselor Zarella.
I think, if I understand Counselor Green properly, we're talking about just eliminating pronouns altogether and using phrases instead. It'd be cumbersome, but certainly doable from a drafting standpoint. It would just read in a very stilted manner.
Counselor Green.
I'm not opposed to him. I don't take that personally. I don't feel slighted or off-put by him or his in any of the legal terminology at all because I assume that refers to all of us, as we are as humans. My real question is, when we start in four of six, when it talks about the parliamentary authority, is that going to be an appointed position? And are we appointing that position? Have we done that? What is the, I guess, vehicle by how we appoint the parliamentary authority to this board?
If you look down to 1.5 from 1.3, the parliamentary authority is not a person. It's Robert's Rules of Order. The parliamentary authority refers to the set of rules by which we operate when these rules don't otherwise specify.
Okay. So it's not a specific person?
No, no.
Okay.
When it says debatable only as permitted by the parliamentary authority, it basically means where Robert's Rules says you can debate it, you can debate it. Where Robert's Rules says you can't, you can't.
Thank you for that clarification.
No problem. Any, does anyone else have anything on four?
Counselor Dina Tally. I apologize. Counselor Donnelly, you are indeed first.
I just don't know why the Fitchburg City Council has to have more legalese than normal, regular, professional attorneys and... I mean, I go along with it, but if it's for all practical purposes, his means anyone, not by sex, just a person, I think.
Tally.
Everyone is afraid of being politically incorrect here. The first, 1.1 specifically says that he does not mean he necessarily. That's number one. Number two, I believe in those who draft these kinds of rules, I listen to what they say as an explanation of what it is. We're being video-recorded tonight. I think the newspaper is here. Those who've put this together have made it crystal-clear what that means. No one in this room has said, "We don't care about women. We don't care about females. It's only males or nothing." We've made it clear, that's what this means, to be in line with legalese, accepted doctrine, meaning it to be everybody. So before anybody jumps to conclusions, I hope people watch the video and hear what the explanation is. And that's, I didn't even think of this, you know, but that's just, I guess, I'm behind the times. I don't really care either. Make it she. I don't care. But it's been specifically stated tonight what the motivation is behind this, and it certainly has nothing to do with gender bias. And any scintilla of a hint that towards that end is not backed up by any evidentiary fact that you'll see here tonight. Thank you.
Counselor Caddy.
So, my memory of the council when I was younger, it was all men. I don't know when this document was written or rewritten, but I think, and it may have been Mary Whitney was the first woman city councilor. Does that sound right? Pretty close.
Don't look close.
In any event, just to make a point, I don't care one way or the other, but just out of respect of the council, the woman on the council and the men, it's not a big deal. It's our document. He or she is perfectly fine. It's, this isn't, you know, we have attorneys here, and I respect your positions, but this is our council, and he or she's perfectly fine. I mean, it's fine. I would hate to see us change that.
And Counselor Caddy, I think it was Ellen DeGrono, and I'm sure one of us is going to get a phone call after.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll make a motion that we, can we make a motion to amend this? Is that, I'll make a motion to amend four of six to have it read "he" or "she" in place of "he."
Second.
I have a motion and second to replace "he" or "she," he with he or she, throughout the entirety of the document and subsequent versions.
Yes.
As well.
Yes.
So I have a motion and second. Speaking of the motion, I will just add, I mean, you know, the pronouns are changing and rapidly expanding, and I do think I can see a future in the next few years where Massachusetts takes legal action, you know, and moves in that direction of having a list that is, you know, four to eight slashes long. And by going "he" or "she," we're then starting to exclude, though I realize 1.1 stays in effect. That said, I have a motion and second. Speaking on the motion, Counselor Walsh.
Yeah, I agree. I think that 1.1 clearly says that the reference to a specific gender refers and applies to persons of any gender. And I think if you limit it to "he" or "she," you're limiting it to exclude people who don't identify as "he" or "she." So, and that was the intent.
So I have a motion and second. All those in favor of said amendment?
Aye.
Can you please raise your hand, if you would? I have four in favor. All those opposed?
It fails because you need eight.
It fails by a vote of four to six. And just, we do need two-thirds majority on all of these. Eight votes. That's it. Four of six is before you in its original form.
I have no further commentary on it.
Motion to approve four of six. Motion to approve four of six.
I have a motion and second to approve revision four of six. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? One in opposition. Counselor Squalia.
Five of six has a relatively small number of relatively small changes, but it is the first draft that has things that actually change what we do. So I'm going to walk through it a little bit more slowly. 1.11 simply eliminates the words "and" and "address" on the requirements for a counselor to submit a petition. This actually probably should have gone in four because this is something we don't do already. When a counselor files a petition, we don't typically put our address on it. Our addresses are all on file. This just clarifies that that is not a requirement anymore. That would be specifically for counselors filing petitions. Citizen petitions will still have the same requirements as usual. 2.2, the first change, simply specifies that when the president opens the meeting, we proceed as the agenda dictates. That's what orders of the day means, because there may be a special meeting in which we don't have a Committee on Records report to approve or anything like that. So it doesn't make sense to specify that every council meeting starts with a report from records. And the latter section just gives some clarity to what the process would be in the unlikely event that we had a council meeting where neither the chair nor vice-chair was present and had not designated anyone to take the chair on their behalf. It had said prior to this that a president pro tem would be chosen. It didn't say how or from what slate of potential candidates or anything like that. So this just gives us some direction in the unlikely event that happens. It hasn't happened while I've been on the council, and no one's told me about it happening. But 2.3, first, again, just changes up the order of the council meeting to accord with what we typically do, adds in roll call and pledge of allegiance prior to public forum. And then it also stipulates that, again, as we typically do, we can depart from this order by unanimous consent, not only by an actual vote. That would be where the president says, "If there's no objection, we'll hear the report from the Committee on Appointments first," or something to that nature. No objection is a request for unanimous consent. If any counselor does object, then it goes to a vote. 2.4 adds that anyone speaking in the public forum will give their address in addition to their name. Again, we've been asking for it, but it's not in the rules. 3.3, under strict Robert's Rules, we're only supposed to be debating when there's a motion on the table. So when an agenda item comes up, the president would read the agenda item, and then the first thing that would happen would be someone would make a motion and then would debate. That never happens. So this outlines, again, pretty much what we actually do. The reason it's in five rather than four is because it's a larger change than I wanted to make in a simple draft like four. So what we did was, we set it up so that it tries its best to describe what we do. An agenda item comes up, we discuss it, then a motion gets made. The language-limiting debate is, again, substantially what we already have. We've discussed the two-time limit for debate in full council sessions. That's just in Robert's Rules. That's not new. This just clarifies that you can speak up to two times on the sort of pre-motion stuff and then still have at least one shot at speaking on any given motion, but without just going back again and again for two new times every time a motion is made, because that could get very long. Anyone stop me if you have questions? 310 just clarifies 3.9. We had a rule, we've always had a rule, that says that roll call votes are taken beginning with the counselor who led the pledge, but there was never any rule that actually said that any counselor was going to lead the pledge or how we would determine who that was. So we added that in. That's, I'll yield for a question?
Yes.
Counselor Squalia.
Just question on that.
Just question on, on that, um, "The rotation shall continue from the most recent counselor who actually led." Does that mean if a counselor is absent, the next council meeting, that counselor will lead the, will lead the salute to the flag, or they get skipped?
Counselor Zarela.
They get skipped. Basically, it's, it's exactly what we already do. If someone's out, we don't try to backtrack and give them their turn. We just keep going as if they had already had their turn. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
311, uh, it had said that every member has to vote unless excused by the council, but we never do that, and it wasn't even clear what that would mean or why we would do that. So, we decided it made more sense to just clarify that everyone must vote unless they have a conflict of interest that they're recusing for. Again, it's pretty much what we already do. It's just that technically there was this option there that no one used and that we probably all would have been thrown for a loop if anyone had tried to use it. So, we decided it was better to get rid of it. Section 4.1, oh, there's been a bit of a glitch with the lettering.
The numbering and the other, we'll just, just take note, we'll, we'll apply sensible numbering and lettering on, on the revisions once, once accepted.
Um, so what's currently listed as II, um, the committee on legislative affairs had had this anomalous line that said that it was, uh, supposed to have referrals on recommendations on the mayor's inaugural address. We couldn't figure out what that was supposed to mean, and we couldn't, and no one could recall any time when the committee on legislative affairs had actually addressed the mayor's inaugural address or made recommendations about it. So, we took it out, because frankly, if the mayor wants our recommendations on his inaugural address, he can ask us and we'd be happy to tell him. Then in what are currently numbered as LL and NN, we realized that the committee on records on the committee on economic development had no actual purview. They existed, but it didn't say what they were for. So we filled that in. Then, 4.4, I'm not going to get into because it just references 4.7, which I'll flip forward to. 4.7 is another one where there was a rule that said something should happen, but it never said how it should happen or what it does. So we tried to fill that in. It had said that if something is referred to a committee, the committee has to report on it, even if it's just reporting a recommendation to hold, by the second council meeting after it gets referred, or ask the council for more time at that meeting. It never said how the council should grant more time, and it never said what happens if the council says, "No, you can't have more time." So this is intended to clarify that. It would be just by vote or unanimous consent, and if extra time isn't granted, it's basically as if we pulled it from committee and just plunked it in front of the council to vote on, uh, with no recommendations. I'll yield for a question?
Counselor Squallia.
So does this mean that for items that are in committees for a very long time, for example, they should be referenced in the committee report after at least two council meetings after?
That would be correct, yes. As long as the committee takes some action on it, even if it's just to bring it up and say, "We recommend this matter be held," that's still action, so it wouldn't trigger this request for extra time or anything. The issue with the request for extra time would be either if the committee fails to meet for some reason or other, or fails to take up the matter at all for some reason, lack of a quorum maybe, or something like that.
Does this mean that those matters will now be listed on the city council agenda as being held and?
So it'll appear under the, the committee's reports, which then gets sent to the, the city council on the agenda.
Okay.
I guess I, thank you. I have a question under 4.1.
Not necessarily for going over these rules, but when petitions are assigned a specific working subgroup, are these the, are, is this kind of what's followed when it gets decided which subcommittee should hear the petition? Like, are, and only following up with the rule of that it needs to be heard, I'm, I'm speaking only for public safety. I've got petitions that are in public safety that are out of the scope of my fire, police, license, and military background on those assignments.
So Counsel Green, those are, the clerk assigns, based on, on these guidelines and past practice, assigns, um, in parentheses on our agenda, which she believes to be kind of the most appropriate committee for us to refer them to. Uh, they're not actually referred to those committees until such time as we, as a council, refer to, um, you know, when we, when we vote at the end of every meeting, to refer them to the, the appropriate committees. Uh, so we, that, that is always moving forward, can, can change. We can decide to send it to multiple committees, um, different committees than what is referred on the agenda. That's, but that's helping to provide scope and clarity to, to our existing committees. Adding to that, Counselors, uh, Counselor Zarela.
Through you, Mr. President, I'd like to ask if the counselor could give an example of a matter outside the scope?
Yeah, I've got two rotaries that have been sent to public safety about rotary or roundabouts that are outside of what my police and fire department have the time to analyze and engineer, when it really should, I mean, looking at this, it really should go first to public works to decide if the work can even be done. So it was just a matter of clarification, because I know those have, I've been holding on to those, because my police and fire departments are like, I don't, we don't have the money to get into an engineering study for these.
Thank you.
So Counsel, will we address, and we actually, you know, when I first became a counselor, it used to be fairly routine for a petition to be sent to multiple committees. So in this case, a rotary, the police probably should weigh in at some point about whether or not, uh, you know, the rotary is, is safe in that area. You probably want the traffic division at some point weighing in, but you also want public works weighing in. Um, so it used to be referred to multiple committees at times, and, and somewhere along the line, that practice seems to have stopped. Uh, so we, we discussed that of, you know, it's, it's more our own practice, but in theory, we should be ensuring that it's the right, going to the, one, the right committee, but two, all of the relevant committees that they might have a say or expertise in this matter.
Thank you.
Counselor Squallia.
And, and on 4.7, so in this situation, if this matter was then put on our agenda, because it's been held in the committee more than two city council meetings, then we could see it and we could even take action to refer it to another committee, correct?
As, as appropriate, so long as that other committee be, have the appropriate scope to be able to, to work on it. So for example, if, um, unless it falls, so under the rotary question, if it should also go to public works, that would be the appropriate time to send it to public works. But I probably wouldn't send a rotary question to legislative affairs, because public safety hasn't dealt with it. So it still has to fall within the scope of what the committee is designed to do and rule on and make recommendations on.
Sure.
I think in practice, what we'd probably see is all of those matters that are beyond two, two meetings out, we'd probably see that appear on the agenda, um, under the, under a report and with a recommendation that'd be held in committee, um, and then the council can do with it what it so chooses, but it still appears on the agenda for, for any action and any, for any action to be, to be made by the council.
So I, I, I really appreciate that, to be able to see kind of the missing, the lost kind of things that we've referred to committees that have been there for a long time that we kind of don't, aren't remembering until all of a sudden they come up. So I would love to see those on the committee, on the agenda, even if they say they're held. So, uh, back to section 3.3, this, this really concerns me, because we're limiting our options for discussion, really. Uh, I appreciate the, the council and counselors' input on different matters, and I appreciate that we all have different capabilities and kind of backgrounds that we can bring different things to the table. But by limiting ourselves to two maximum chances to speak at all before a motion, and then one maximum chance to speak after a motion is made, it really encourages more grandstanding, long-winded statements rather than active discussion among counselors. And that, that really concerns me.
Counselor Zarela.
So, uh, I understand that perspective. I'd, I'd like to note that that aspect of this rule actually is not a change from the present state. Uh, currently, the limits on debate are governed by Roberts rules and, which dictates a maximum of two opportunities to speak on a given matter. So this simply carries that forward and makes it clearer. In order to actually lift those limits, which, uh, in order to actually lift those limits, we would actually need a separate rule change, which is not within the scope of this particular revision, um, but could potentially be brought in January or something like that. But it would actually be a change from the current rules to not have this limit, um, rather than vice versa. I'd also note that as a committee, we did discuss this and considered that if we had unlimited debate in the council, not only would it get unwieldy, but it would also defeat the purpose of committees, uh, which is, which are intended as a vehicle for more broad-based debate.
And I would also further add that if we were following Roberts rules as they were intended and as our current rules stipulate, we shouldn't actually be, um, speaking right now on any of the matters, and you would have already exceeded, Counselor Squallia and Counsel Green, I believe, you would have already both exceeded your, your limits to be able to debate. So this, this provides that mechanism to, um, to really be able to discuss items pre, pre-motion. Counselor Dina Tally.
Am I reading 3.3 right, though, where it first says "at the discretion of the chair?" So, it says "at the discretion of the chair." So if the chair doesn't, chair doesn't have to enforce that two-limit rule. Am I reading that right?
Counselor Zarela.
It would actually be the other way around. It's that, under, under Roberts rules, there's simply no discussion at all until there's a motion on the table. This says the chair can allow discussion before there is a motion on the table, but not more than twice per counselor. So, basically, it's not that we actually anticipated specific instances in which the chair would disallow this sort of discussion, though potentially if there were an urgent matter that had to move to a motion quickly. But this, this, this is a pure expansion of what would be allowed under the current rules, not a constriction.
So your, your recommendation then is to, if you have an issue with this, that's a separate discussion. Because for me, you know, I, I agree with the counselor myself, because I get frustrated when I have something additional I want to say that I didn't think of, and I'm shut down. And I understand the two-limit rule for pre-motion discussion. I get that. I'm, I'm on board with that. But when the motion is actually made, we only get one bite at the apple. I, I, I've never liked that myself. So, um, while I'm not going to stop this from going forward tonight, um, you know, I may consider that in the future, because I don't even, I don't even think, not that this is a fault of any, I don't even think we've been following that. I know I, I know I've spoke more than once after a motion has been made, and I, and that's how I think it should be. So pre-motion, I get it. You know, let's, let's, let's actually put something on the table. But after that, you know, counselors may not have everything on their mind initially when they speak, and to me, it's a lot of pressure to say, "Well, I only get one crack at this, and if I don't get all my points across, or there's still uncertainty in the room, none of us can go at it again." I, I've never liked that, and I'm hoping that we can change that next year, because make it three-limit. I don't, one is not enough to me, but that's a separate discussion for another time, I believe. Um, I agree with the two-limit pre-motion, but not, not after a motion is made. One is not enough. That's just my opinion, and I, you know, I would be interested in entertaining that change in January or beyond, because I, I don't think that's, that's, that makes a lot of sense to me. Thank you.
Counselor Zarela.
So we did consider that. That's actually why 3.3 is written in a slightly convoluted manner, because it actually gives the counselor a choice. On, like I said, under current rules, you'd be able to speak twice on any given motion, but not at all before a motion is made. This says, if you haven't spoken before the motion is made, you're still held to the normal two-limit when a motion is made. But if you do choose to speak before the motion is made, then you only speak once afterwards, just to make sure that counselors aren't, you know, speaking twice at length, then a motion is made, speaking twice at length again, then perhaps a, a motion to amend is made and speaking twice again. Uh, it can get complicated very, very quickly.
Counselor Dina Tally.
It, it just, it doesn't happen often. I, I think I can count on maybe both hands in my 12 years here, where we've had a discussion or debate where it drew on, it went on for a couple hours on the same subject. Um, maybe four or five issues off the top of my head I can think of, that that did take place, but 98% of the time it doesn't. I just think it's a little complicated, just in the heat of the debate, in the heat of the moment. I know the chair, the, the president has to make sure that that's followed, but, you know, I, I understand. So, so just so I'm clear, the, 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 the pre-motion limit of two times you speak, if you don't exercise speaking at all before a motion is made, you get two bites at the apple after the motion is made.
That is the current wording. However, I am willing to put forth an amendment to simply strike the second sentence of the rule, if that's the sticking point.
I would also further add that you can suspend a rule at any time. So this might be, in, in the instances that you described, Counselor Dina Tally, of, you know, we're an hour or two of debate, uh, and, and we've really substantially moved forward in the discussion, and we're, we're starting substantively work through things, and everyone's, everyone's ability to speak has been exhausted. I, I think that's when practically we, we suspend that particular rule and move forward with debate. So, that, that would allow a two-thirds, uh, two-thirds, uh, vote to then suspend and then just move forward.
So if a counselor, counselor wants to speak a second time and can't, or at any time in the discussion, one of us can just raise their hand and motion to suspend 3.3? And if, if, if two-thirds or more says, "Okay," we carry it forward. Okay, that, that I wasn't clear on. That kind of adds some kind of a protective layer on this, so maybe it's okay then to me. But I, I just wanted to make sure there was a clause or a way out of that, because sometimes one time is not possible, given the nature of the actual discussion and, and the, the complicated nature of it. So, thank you.
Counselor Squallia.
Um, like Counselor Caddy said, this is our council. These are our council rules. And like Counselor Dina Tally said, it's not the way that we have been proceeding. The, the one-limit rule, by requiring us to suspend it, it just seems like an added unnecessary, um, limit to our discussion. Because so often, I'll, I'll make a point, and then, for example, Counselor Zarela will, will make another point, and I say, "Oh, but, but, but on that point," you know, and then we're having a discussion. But if we limit ourselves to one, two, three bites at the apple, like Counselor Dina Tally says, then we can't have that back and forth discussion of a free-flowing exchange of ideas. And I am completely against these limits in that regard.
Counselor Caddy.
So, just an observation. When someone speaks more than once, uh, sometimes you'll be defending your position, and sometimes you're saying the same thing over again. And then someone will speak, and then you raise your hand, and you're speaking again, and you're defending your position, and you're saying the same thing you said twice before. What really needs to happen is when you speak the second or the third time, it should be a new idea, something that you didn't say the first time, the second time. Maybe to move forward, we could hold this out, pass everything else, send this back to the ad hoc committee to see if they can embellish on this a little bit more. to the ad hoc committee to see if they can embellish on this a little bit more that everyone will be happy with. I mean, Counselor Squallion just said that. I'm fine. If you want to raise your hand 10 times, and you're going to bring a new idea to the table, bring it on. But not to say the same thing you said the second time or the third time.
Counselor Donnelly.
For, I can't say for how many years, but Roberts' rules was not how the council ran for many, many, many years. And recently, because Roberts' rules seems to be more popular than all of the other rules of order, but it's not mandatory, unless the council accepts it, it's not mandatory to use Roberts' rules to the letter of the book. It's just a guideline, so that there's a sense of order. And when all things come down to the nitty-gritty, maybe then the president wants to use Roberts' rules. But by and large, it's controlled by the president. It's just a set, to have a set of guidelines. It doesn't, we don't have to be ironclad unless the council accepts it. And even then, exceptions can be made.
And Counselor Donnelly, I would agree with you that at times, yes, the chair is trying to make some discretion in order to allow a flow of discussion and better deliberation. But in some ways, this is actually less restrictive than, so right now, if someone wanted to enforce Roberts' rules, which is the governing, this would, this actually allows a little bit more flexibility than we currently have. So whether or not it's strictly adhered to, which I'd argue if we have rules, we need to start better adhering to them, but this at least allows for a little bit more flexibility. You know, I had councilors from previous councils, you know, from just two years ago that talked about, you know, they talked about how it got unruly a bit, you know, where people would talk four, five, six times for the same motion. And I'll pick on myself. Those councilors said, you know, that didn't used to happen. You know, eight years ago, that didn't happen. Six years ago, that didn't happen. And in some ways, in order, you know, I think at times I tried to allow for better flow of discussion, but in some ways, it's actually made it less productive, because everyone can speak as many times as they want. So I know for me, what it's done is, you know, or what it used to be, is it made me really reflect on when I speak, you know, I get two bites. I get, when I say it, I better mean it. And then if someone persuades me, I better make sure that's my final, you know, I've been persuaded the last time if I want to add in. So I think this allows you that, the flexibility of, words have meaning when you speak. It shouldn't just be the latest fluid thought that pops through your head. This should be the, "I have something to say, and this is where I stand, and this is how I'll vote." So I do get concerned of, you know, if we're handing it out like candy, then, you know, then do we ever finally get to our point? And do we ever finally arrive at a decision and make a vote? That said, you know, I think there is additional flexibility if this body feels we need to flush it out further. I'm happy to explore that. Counselor Fleming.
I believe that those rules were set in place at the beginning of the year. What I think is they're just not being enforced. I think people are just going off subject, and it's being allowed to not interrupt them. So I don't think this is really anything different than we've been doing. It's just hopefully going to keep it in check a little bit more.
And I would also, this gives us a three-month window or four-month window of, let's try it under this new, and if at the end of the four months, councilors come back and they're like, "Well, that was awful." Like, we can all agree that that was pretty terrible, then we get to discuss this, you know, in four months' time. And if we get to the point where it's so prohibitive that we can't carry on basic business of the council, then absolutely, we'll, you know, we'll modify as necessary. I think this gives us a chance for four months to see, what does this look like in force and in effect? And then modify when we get to the organizational meeting in January, if, you know, assuming that nothing disastrous happens, and we need to change it before then. That's just my opinion. Counselor Caddy.
I won't be here, then. So I was going to make a motion to pass 5 of 6, but send 3.3 back to the ad hoc committee for a little more investigation.
Second.
I have a motion and second to accept revision 5 of 6, excluding the revision made to 3.3. Speaking on the motion, Counselor Zarela.
I would like to make a motion to amend that motion, to pass the first sentence of 3.3 along with the rest of the document, so as to allow for our council to continue operating as it has, and send the remainder of 3.3 back to the Rules Committee for further tinkering.
Is that amenable to?
That's my motion.
So after the provided?
Can I second the amendment to the amendment?
Priority. Everything from provided to made will not be included in this vote. I won't repeat all of that. Counselors, clear? Counselor Zarela.
And just speaking on that, to clarify, that would mean that until and unless a further rule is adopted on this subject, the council would essentially continue as it already has. We would continue to speak before the motion, have our two shots, as we've been doing, before the motion and after the motion, and so on. It would not change our current practice with that second sentence left out.
I have a motion and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? If unanimous, motion carries. Counselor Zarela.
Now, the final section, 6 of 6. These are the only large changes. 1.2 is not, however. That's just something that the committee noticed was missing while we were already at the point of 6 on 6 of 6, and decided not to go back and edit the previous drafts. It just says that when we're selecting a president and vice president, we're selecting it from among the council. We all take that for granted, but it's kind of like technically the Speaker of the House does not have to be a congressman. No one knows that, because it's never happened. But it seems best to clarify that the president must be a counselor, and the vice president must be a counselor. So that's all that does. 1.3 is the role of a parliamentarian. And I'd like to clarify, because this came up extensively in discussion in the committee itself, the parliamentarian has no authority. All authority continues to rest with the president. The question of whether the president asks any questions of the parliamentarian is entirely up to the president. And once the parliamentarian has been asked and has answered a question, it is entirely up to the president whether or not to follow that advice, or whether to go in a different direction with it. It is simply to create a mechanism so that the president can designate someone other than himself or herself to keep up to date on the rules, and to make sure that, in addition to running the meeting, the president doesn't also have to be thumbing through the rulebook if any dispute comes up. Then we have no further changes until 3.7.
Counselor, I just want to add that it doesn't necessarily have to be another counselor around the table. So you've seen some practice of this in effect, you know, over the previous six months at times. You've seen that I've referred to Counselor Zarela and asked for his opinion from Roberts' rules under a point of order. That said, it could also, in the future, be the city clerk, it could also be the city solicitor, or another employee, if we're so fortunate to have a, you know, a formal parliamentarian with all the proper certifications, or someone else who's extensively knowledgeable. So it allows that person, the president, to select that person, and again, no authority and under no obligation to be consulted. Counselor Walsh.
And I also wanted to point out that, I mean, thus far, we've relied heavily on Counselor Zarela, but we've also relied heavily on the city clerk, and that really is not her job to be parliamentarian, nor is it Counselor Zarela's. So this gives a position of someone who actually is responsible for knowing those rules and advising the council president.
Counselor Deenat Ali.
I mean, obviously, it's going to be a counselor, because, I mean, we're here. I mean, I don't know many people who are going to come to these meetings for two or three hours and sit here in the event that they're not even called upon, but they're here just in case. I mean, I...
Most likely, however, if we were to have, say, an assistant city clerk or an assistant city solicitor who had a proper certification or had extensive knowledge, you can see a circumstance where you might say, "Would you be willing to serve in this capacity?"
Sure.
I know you're already cringing at that thought of Mr. Solicitor.
I'd just like to also clarify, when we were drafting that section of it and decided on "or" city employee, there was also some thought to the more distant future, where if the city finds itself financially able, there are some legislative bodies in larger cities that actually hire a parliamentarian from a roster of registered parliamentarians, specifically to keep their meetings running very smoothly. I know that's not on the cards for Fitchburg in the near future, but the option is there in the rule. Anything else on that one? Moving on to 3.7, this is what I might call an abundance of caution. It's not something that has come up in the time that I've been on the council, and it's not something that anyone has said has come up. But if you think back to the passage of the Affordable Care Act in 2010, the Constitution says, "Only the House can originate a revenue bill." The Affordable Care Act is a revenue bill. It contains revenue provisions, but all the text came from the Senate. The way they did that was they took a thing called "gut and replace," where they took a House bill, made an amendment that basically said, "Delete all the text and insert our text." And then you have a House bill that's written entirely by the Senate. Basically, this just says, any amendment can change the details of something that it's amending, but can't change the basic character of what it's amending. It shouldn't ever come up, but it's a just-in-case.
Counselor Deenat Ali.
So as an example, if there is a petition to install a berm at someone's property, no counselor, per the rule, can make a motion to say, make a motion to not install the berm at this property.
No, that would actually be allowed in that circumstance. This would keep it from saying...
Something different than a berm?
From installing streetlights, or speed traps, or even, you know, medical marijuana dispensary at every...
So it's still, the subject is still the berm, but, okay, so the rule says, "I put a petition in for a berm," and Counselor Walsh says, "Make a motion to install a fence instead of a berm."
It's... I think in that case, it would really depend on the circumstance. If there were a circumstance where a fence would be a viable alternative to a berm for the purpose for which the petition was offered, then it would be a germane amendment. On the other hand, if it's just, "We wanted a berm to divert water flow, but we think a fence would look nicer, so let's put a fence instead," that would not be germane, and it wouldn't be allowed.
Well, I'd love to see you be on top of that one.
It's the kind of rule that would only tend to come up if some counselor thought it was being violated and raised a point of order, to say, "That's not an allowable amendment." If no counselor is going to object to it, then presumably, we will all assume that the amendment is allowable.
And part of our justification was also, this is also open-meeting law. If we were putting an agenda item on there that referred to a public works adjustment to a specific address, it's reasonable that the public would say, "Oh, there's something concerning that address, and some kind of physical change or a modification that could be made." And then we remove that address and make it halfway across the city, and it's no longer about public works, it's about installing a sub-police station there. Well, that's not really fair to the public. There was no reasonable posting that the public could be informed about this, and that's not really what was before us, what originally came. So, you know, we started with the most absurd scenario, but you could see how it could be manipulated in such a way.
That's clear.
Let's just remove that option.
Okay. 3.9 is a streamlining rule change. It basically says, if we don't need a roll-call vote, if neither the rules nor any statute say that we need a roll-call vote, then the president can request that a matter be passed by unanimous consent. Now, again, unanimous consent is what it says. If any counselor objects, they can force a vote. So this isn't going to silence anyone. It's simply if there are some of those, I can't think of an example off the top of my head, but we all know...
If there are no objections, we'll now hear an oral report from the Appointments Committee, and then we just go to it.
Or even a substantive petition, if it's, if there are no objections, we'll approve the mayor's request to transfer $1,000 from this account to that account.
So like a committee on records recommendation, we would just say, you know, "There's no objection for unanimous consent."
Exactly.
We don't have to do a motion and a second, and then have a...
Communication, I often, we don't take the formal vote. It's usually, if no objections, we'll send these to the Appointments Committee, for example.
Right. So this...
I'm sorry. But all it takes is one of us to raise our hand in objection and say, "No, I want to vote."
Okay. Yep. So all this does is give an option to make things move a little smoother. I'm going to skip over 3.16 for a moment, just because it's the most complicated rule change, and I'd like to leave it for last. 4.4, the first change is really just a clarification. It just specifies that we're not only referring orders or resolutions to committees. There are plenty of matters that aren't technically an order or a resolution, but they still go to committee if they're relevant. Unless otherwise ordered, basically just, again, streamlines it, makes it more automatic by deleting that. If something is a finance matter, it goes to the Finance Committee. If something is a public works matter, it goes to the Public Works Committee. If someone were to object, they could still raise an objection to that, but it wouldn't actually require us to make a formal motion for every committee referral when it's a simple matter that clearly falls within that committee's purview. And the last change should be irrelevant. It's language that we all agreed was probably a relic of some old decision that no one remembers. Number one, we don't get petitions or requests from the administration for expenditure of funds less than $200. It just doesn't happen, practically speaking. But secondly, having consulted with our auditor, hypothetically, if we were to receive a petition for, or a request for a transfer of funds under $200, we would still have to approve it. So we might as well still kick it over to Finance, rather than checking the lines and saying, "How much is this for? Does it go to Finance? Does it not?" If it's money, it goes to Finance, period. So that just eliminates that weird exception that was never going to come up. And then the last one, before we return to 3.16, basically provides that in small committees or in committees with small present bodies, the chair can participate as a full member and make motions. Normally, a chair can't make motions. But in small committees, we had all agreed that we've found that there are occasionally circumstances where, if you've got only two or three members, sometimes the chair is the one who has the clearest picture of what is supposed to be moved. So rather than the chair saying, "I'd like to entertain a motion of the form such and such," and then waiting for someone else to move it, and then someone else to second it, it just says that if there's three or fewer, or if all members agree, the chair can just make motions himself or herself. So again, streamlined. If there are no questions on that, we'll return to 3.16. If you've heard of the term "instant runoff voting," that's essentially what this is. We were thinking back to two years, roughly two years ago now, when we were filling a seat on the council... seat on the council, and because of the way things shook out, people were changing their votes in response to what they heard other people voting, and we almost wound up with an intractable situation where we had a tie and no means of breaking it. This attempts to streamline that by condensing all those round after round after round into a single round, where I believe the clerk sent out a video to all counselors. I don't know if you've all had a chance to view that. I'll try to summarize it without using visual aids or anything, but the video is really good, and thank you for finding that. Basically, the idea is, if we have more than two candidates for a single position, whether it be a seat, an open seat on the council, or theoretically, under the charter, we may be called upon to replace the mayor, which isn't going to happen, but, you know, hypothetically, it could if there were a vacancy, or any other such thing, even our own election for president, if we had three or more candidates. Each of us would fill out a ballot with all the names on it, where we number them one through however many there are. Then the city clerk would count the first-place votes. If there's a majority winner, that's the winner, no further counting, just as we already do. If there is no majority, instead of going back to the counselors and saying, okay, now who do you vote for? We would just knock off the lowest vote-getters like we already do, and then the counselors who voted for those lowest-place people as their first choice would just count their second choice instead, and see if we have a majority between the first choices and those transferred second choices. It's basically, if your candidate gets bumped off, your vote transfers down to your next choice automatically. The only other wrinkle to that is, we did realize there could still be a tie. If we were voting to fill a council seat, there would still be 10 of us, so it's possible that even after all this balloting stuff, we would still be five to five. Then the president decides, simply because there has to be some tiebreaker, and we felt that a coin flip was a little bit frivolous, so. And if we have two or more seats to fill at the same time, we fill one, then go back and ballot the other, rather than trying to fill them both off the same ballot or anything. For example, when we were filling school committee seats a while back.
Counselor Boishman, you had a question?
My question on that tiebreaker with the chair is, what happens if, say, Council Boishman's not here? You end up to be 10. Does the chair still call, does he still make the final rule?
If it were a tie, yes.
How could that be? So he votes twice?
Only if it's a tie, and only because we need to have some tiebreaker. We discussed other methods of breaking a tie, besides just flipping a coin. We discussed possibly designating the mayor, but we decided that would be a bad idea to have an overlap between the legislative and executive branches. I don't remember if there was any other method we had discussed specifically, but-
A coin flip.
Well, yes, a coin flip, drawing out of a hat, but-
Money mo.
Right, so-
Counselor Fleming.
When you say ballot, I'm not understanding. Is this something we're going to do outside of a meeting, or is it going to be done during the meeting?
Counselor Ralph.
We didn't actually specify. I could see us doing it at our seats, or like, walking into the stacks or something, and filling it out, and then turning it in. Or we could go in, I don't know, go into the hallway or something. The idea is, though, you would have an actual piece of paper. It wouldn't actually make any sense to keep it particular, to go to particular lengths to keep it secret, because it would be public record anyway, once the votes are cast, just as it would be if we were casting those votes verbally in council.
So, I see a question?
We could not, and in fact, so it would either, we could do it a couple of different ways. In theory, we could get like a whiteboard, or we then break it out, or the clerk could just announce, kind of at each step, as you eliminate each candidate, just kind of walk through, okay, this, you know, vote number two for Counsel Kusmerik was this, vote number two for Counsel Walsh was that. Did I explain that correctly?
I believe so.
So my question to the chair, or to Mr. Zarella, what is wrong with the way we're doing it now? Basically, I don't understand the purpose. If I say, if there's eight people running, like the last time for the council last seat, right? We all get to vote who we want, they all come up, and Donley, Catty, Zarella, Donley. So if you're saying you're going to eliminate the low getter, so, which song that, and I talked to you about this at the coffee shop, that I wanted Tom Donley say, but then, he's the low getter. But he wasn't the lowest person, was Counsel Zarella was the lowest person. So he can't go back on the ballot, because we're saying to him, he's gone already.
Counselor Zarella.
That already applies in our current voting system. Back when we did it with eight people, whoever got the lowest votes, or tied for the lowest votes in the first round, was not an eligible vote in the latter rounds already. That was already true. This doesn't change that.
Right, I understand that, but what I don't understand, then my vote won't get to count if it ends up between Counsel Squallier, Counsel Green, and I want to pick. So, because you're already saying you're going to them, but I never voted for them. But now I want to go to a different part. I'm fine, I'm having a hard time to understand that part of it.
Each counselor would rank every candidate. So using the example of the counselors in the room, if we were all on the ballot, each counselor would have 11 ranks on their ballot. So if your first nine preferences all get knocked off in early rounds, you would still have gotten to choose between those last two, because your number 10 would be your vote, not your number 11. It may be that you would have preferred one of the first nine, but they were already eliminated even under our current system. This wouldn't change that in any way. There is no feasible way to do multiple-round runoff voting and allow every counselor to vote their top preference every time. It would wind up with each round being exactly the same, and no resolution. Does that answer the counselor's question?
I'm still kind of lost.
Counselor Catty.
No. Well, I think-
I'm seeing a lot of different fingers.
Am I not, okay. I guess I don't really understand why this was done. I mean, I understand the example from two years ago, but we still got through it. I think if you fill out the ballot right from the start, you know, there was, I mean, is the clerk going to be reading each ballot, and the counselor's name attached to that ballot? Because I think there was a lot of transparency, and we had to, right on the spot, pick somebody in the second or third round. This doesn't normally happen, but I know two years ago, we were getting to that point. We got through it. But I guess I didn't, I guess I don't see an issue with what we're doing now that would necessitate this change.
I'll just add, I got the vast majority of the council, maybe as many as eight members afterwards, that just said, well, that was an unmitigated disaster, and that never happens again. I mean, it was that, and previous votes, because I think I've participated in, including the joint conventions, I think I've done like eight of these things, I don't think any of them have gone smoothly, because it ultimately always comes down to, there's a tie, and we just keep going over and over and over again, until someone yields and says, fine, I'll change my vote, and I'll take one for the entire team, and then they're singled out to be the jerk, instead of having a protocol for how it breaks down. And so it really already does what we're currently doing, it just kind of automates the process, so you're not doing six rounds of voting.
I understand instant runoff. I perfectly understand what it is. I just, I, you know, I guess I was one of the few who didn't have a problem with that, because I, if I recall correctly, there was a lot of confusion about the rules. And what happens if this person's off, and this person's off? There was a lot of questions about procedure, not so much the outcome. So I'm okay with instant runoff in this case. I just, I see some others kind of scratching their heads about why we're actually doing this, and I can understand that viewpoint, so, I mean, I guess in the end, it cuts off any confusion, but I don't know. I mean, part of me says, I don't really like locking in my seven choices right then and there, and that's the end of it. Because now I'm locked in, I can't make a change, like, on the fly. But I understand, I just, I guess I was one of the few that didn't have an issue with two years. I thought it had more to do with understanding of the rules, but maybe this instant runoff process will negate the need for everyone to go, what's this rule if this happens? And what's this rule if that happens? Maybe that's why it's better to do it. I'm not really, I didn't have, I didn't have an issue with it to begin with, but I'll listen to the rest of the body.
Counselor Catty.
So I can, I can see that becoming very confusing. You're going to have to take at least 10, and sometimes 11, if it's going to be a school board member. You're going to fill out your ballot, there could be 10 people applying, and then you've got to go to a piece of graph paper and number everything out. It'd probably take you a long time to figure out the, so, and we've already said that if we voted, and it came down to a tie, that the president makes the decision, nice and clean. It would be nice and clean. All you're trying to do is prevent the tie. You know, you're trying to prevent the tiebreaker.
Counselor Zarella.
So first, I just wanted to comment, we did discuss the logistics of it with our city clerk, and she indicated that this could be done fairly simply with a spreadsheet, as long as the spreadsheet is set up in advance, so there wouldn't be complicated tabulation. It would just be, sort of, enter the votes really quickly, in a span of a minute or two, and then read off the first line, read off the second line.
And we could also have this on a projector, so we could actually have this entered, so it's on the projector. Again, keep in mind, you know, in 12 months, we'll have a council chamber that'll have multimedia setup, so that'll be a much easier, we won't have to go over to a station. But, that said, it can be all there, so everyone can see how you vote, and what your ranking and prioritization was. Counselor Zarella.
So, also, we did discuss, attempting to avoid a tie was one goal, but I believe my colleague is absolutely correct. We could fix that just by saying, the president breaks all ties. The other two advantages are, one, as Counselor DiNatali noted, it saves counselors from having to figure out the rules. All they have to do is make a very simple decision that anyone is capable of making and understanding, namely, in what order do you prefer these people? Do you like this one better than that one, that one better than that one, and so on? Just, if I want this one, if I don't get this one, I want this one. If I don't get that one, I want this one. And you run down the list. There may be some difficulty in choosing the exact ranking, there always is, where you're like, yeah, I don't really have a strong preference between these two, but then at least it's written out, and you don't have to be making that call on the fly when the vote comes around to you. The other advantage is that counselors, because normally, we would vote in series, it leads to counselors voting later in the order, having to consider the votes of the counselors who came before them, which either, depending on each counselor's, I suppose, mentality and voting strategy, it either gives a disproportionate weight to the counselors who vote first, or a disproportionate weight to the counselors who vote last. Whereas this ensures that all counselors have made their choice ahead of time, and then there's no strategizing. There's no, well, this person got a lot of votes in this round, so I guess I'll throw my vote in there, because clearly they're popular, and I want to look popular. Or this person, I was going to vote for them second, in the second round, but they got only two other votes in the first round, and so I don't want to throw my hat in with the losing side. Instead, you've got everything clear and based solely on counselor preference.
Counselor Walsh.
Yeah, I just, I think the reason that we even discussed this at the beginning was to make the process just cleaner, so it's like a one, kind of a one-shot deal. The only time that counselors are going to be able to change their vote is if there's a tie, and that's the first opportunity. So there's a tie, then the counselor, at that point, could change his or her vote. And then if the tie remains, then the council president steps in. But otherwise, everything is done with one vote, and it's a much cleaner process.
And, well, I know you're, you're all trying to wrap your heads around this, and you're saying, this doesn't sound cleaner. Transport yourself back 19, or 21 months ago, to the utter chaos, when we're all saying, wait, what? Who, is this the rule? Because last time, we followed this rule, this time we're following, so this would standardize, so it would always be the same process moving forward, hopefully, and allow for consistency. It's codified, we're all agreeing to it, you know, now, and again in January, and, that said, Counselor DiNatali.
But I'm lying, we should make a rule that says, if you get elected, you got to stay on here. You can't leave. Everyone has this problem. Anyway, I'm going to make a motion to adopt six of six, including the 3.16. I'm just going to put it on the table. That's my motion.
Second, I have a motion in second to accept revision six of six. Speaking on the motion, Counselor Squallier.
I would just like to say that I completely approve of the 3.16. The instant runoff voting is becoming more popular throughout the country, and it's been popular throughout the world, and in our particular instances as counselors, it'll avoid us having to do the round robin around the table, it'll avoid us having to go round and round, and no one changes their vote. It'll be one shot, we can easily rank, and statistically, with instant runoff voting, the candidate is chosen within the first one or two rounds, sometimes goes to the third round. But statistically, it's not usually likely to go into later rounds than that, so fully in support of this.
Counselor Fleming.
Just a simple question. In the first round, you do have to rank everybody.
Yes.
Correct? Okay.
Counselor Boishman.
I'm not going to vote for dispatches from this one here. Based on that 3.16, I don't believe in it. I think we're making a big mistake. I liked it before, the other way around, when we went around. This way, I like the right to choose. If there's two candidates that are popular, and I know I like to see Auntie Zarella getting, then I can give him a shove to get him up there. So I'm not voting for this.
I have a motion in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? One in opposition. Counselor Boishman, the motion carries, nine to one. So with six revisions now under our belts, I just want to thank Counselor Zarella, who did all of the extensive background research. I mean, this was, this was an undertaking, and I just, I want to thank you, Counselor Zarella, because I know, I had tried to wrap my head around this for about four years now, and I was still stuck as to how one could proceed forward, and you did this in just, you know, a month's time, so I commend you.
That's right. Secret of my success.
That's right. All right. Orders, Finance.
Motion to move 21219 through 22219 to Finance.
Second. I have a motion in second to send 212 up to and including 22219 to the Finance Committee. Speaking on the motion, Counselor Zarella.
I'd just like to note, the motion is actually unnecessary, as of our latest revision.
There are no objections. We'll send this to the Finance Committee. All right.
Already screwed up.
You and me both. 22319.
Motion for suspension on 223.
Second. I have a motion in second for suspension of the rules on 22319. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The matter is before you.
Move to adopt 22319.
Second. Motion in second to adopt 22319. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Motion carries.
Motion for suspension on 224.
Second. Motion in second for suspension of the rule on 22419. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The matter is before you.
Motion to approve, second.
22419.
A motion in second to approve 22419. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Motion carries. 22519. Ordered that the Honorable Stephen, the Honorable Mayor Stephen DiNatali is authorized on behalf of the City of Fitchburg to facilitate and execute the attached community host benefit agreement with 226 Westminster Corporation located at-
host benefit agreement with 226 Westminster Corporation located at 226 Westminster Street.
Second.
Motion and second for suspension of the rule on 22519. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Uh, one in opposition, Counsel Boishman, the motion carries. Uh, matter is before the council.
Approve 22519.
I have a motion and second to approve 22519. Speaking on the motion, Counsel Green.
I would just, um, like to ask where we are with the number of host agreements that we have in place and what, what the rules or what the agreement is with everybody that's in place before us.
Mr. Solicitor.
I would need my cheat sheet to give you an accurate number.
It can be for the next meeting.
Unfortunately, Counselor, I'm sorry.
But I don't, I don't need it tonight. I'm just thinking, moving ahead, I would like to see the host agreements that are in place and what those have on paper for what we've agreed to.
Mr. Solicitor, whether it's you or, or Mr. O'Hara, would it be possible for us to, to get that before the next city council meeting?
Absolutely, and, uh, maybe I can do is try to get that sheet updated and get that in as a communication, Counselor.
Thank you.
That'd be wonderful.
Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you.
Counselor Boishman.
I just wanna say, yeah, I really think it's about time that we start sitting down and looking at these host agreements, like Counsel Green says. I think we're starting to get way too many. I think we should set a cap on these host agreements. Um, there's a reason why other communities are not flocking to this and everybody's coming to Pittsburgh, um, and I'm gonna start voting against them. I, I believe that we have enough and enough is enough. I think that we don't have to re-recognize as the capital of pot in the City of Pittsburgh. It's not, number one, like, let me just say, was the capital of plastics at one time. I think we have to be more diversified in what we're getting here and I don't think the answer is pot, or growing marijuana or, or, in that case, even distributing marijuana. So I'm gonna start voting no. I'll have more records on this when I go down the line. I think we have enough. I think it's time that we start going outward and selling the city for better than pot. That's how I feel, so.
I, I'll just add, Counselors, I believe this is, uh, number five of the eight. We voted on the cap. We, we agreed as a body to this cap, so we're, uh, we're operating within the standards that we've set, um, not only for ourselves but for the city. Um, so I, I think we did set that number and I think we're still operating, um, in accordance with that. Counselor Zarella.
Uh, yes, that being said, I was thinking about the total number. Now, I wanna say right up front, I know I was not in favor of raising the cap in the first place. This is not an attempt to recapitulate that debate. We have a cap of eight. I'm fine with that. Um, I do however, think that for a completely different reason, we should have a soft moratorium on future approvals after this until such time as at least one of the approved shops is up and running. Uh, not because of any specific concerns, so much as because we don't want to hit our cap before we've even seen what retail marijuana in Pittsburgh looks like. Um, it would be better perhaps to see how the retail shops actually behave in practice and then we can better judge whether we have the right geographic spread for new shops coming in or whether there are issues that we'd like to enter into our host agreements. Uh, or if we want to relax some of the strictures that we've been including, if it turns out that everything works as well as the proponents say it will and that, you know, it's all sunshine and rainbows, which would be great. So, um, I just think so far we have, if we approve this tonight, which I will vote in favor of, we'll have five host agreements in place and zero operational shops. I just think we were concerned back when we were talking about the cap, about what happens if we give them out too quickly and other, and other organizations don't have an opportunity.
Counselor Zarella. I, well, I, I agree with you that that is probably an appropriate conversation for us to have at some point. We're talking a lot about what may come before us and what will come before us in the future. Um, if we have issues or concerns about number five, and that's 226, uh, Westminster Corporation coming in, then certainly that's, that's up for discussion, but we have a motion and second on the floor. Now I wanna make sure that our discussion, um, is centered around, um, 22519.
Acknowledged. Thank you.
Did you have anything further?
Nothing further.
Counselor DiNatali.
After what you just said, Mr. President.
Counselor Squalia.
Yeah, I was just gonna ask if the solicitor could weigh in, but if we're not gonna discuss that, then, um...
Understood. I have a motion and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those in opposition?
In favor.
It is unanimous. Motion carries. Uh, ordinance, 22619, an ordinance to amend, uh, Counselors, you have a, um, I believe you've all received a communication, uh, this is an, um, to amend the general ordinances of the City of Pittsburgh, Chapter 44, Section 10, by striking the following, uh, and I'm going to use the revised amounts, um, and, uh, which will be inserting in its place under positions paid annually effective July 1st, 2019. City Solicitor, uh, will be $100,000 annually, uh, which equals, uh, $1,923.08 weekly. Um, and for assistant city solicitor, uh, that is $67,516 annually and, uh, $1,288.46 weekly, and this is the first reading, so I'd ask for an amendment.
Motion to amend to 22619 as described in the communication?
Second.
I have a motion and second to amend 22619 to reflect the figures in the communication. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Motion carries.
Motion to pass the ordinance through its first reading as amended.
I have a, I have a motion and second, um, to, uh, to accept 22619 as amended.
Speaking on the motion.
Speaking on the motion, Counsel DiNatali.
Just for clarification purpose, this, this was already in the budget for FY 2020. So this is basically the ordinance catching up with the budget that was passed. Thank you.
A motion and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Motion carries. Uh, petitions, 22719.
22719 through 23019 be sent to their respective committees and boards.
I have a motion, uh, and second to send, um, 227 up to and including 23019 to their respective committees. Speaking on the motion, Counsel Caddy.
I have a question maybe for the solicitor or for Anna. This is a private petition presented by Robert Thompson, is that correct? There wasn't a counsel involved in it?
22819. That's correct.
So in order for the property committee to approve this, I believe it has to go to DPW to, to verify that all the ASBILs are in order. It needs to go to engineering and bend back to the DPW committee before it can go over to property. Does that sound right?
So you're talking about 227?
228.
228. So, so if you have a subdivision, uh, being approved, um, like Tibbetts Circle, in order for the city to approve that as a public way, it has to go through Public Works where all the ASBILs are presented to engineering and approved so that we know if we accept that street that the, the...
227.
Wastewater isn't gonna fall apart, that the road structures aren't gonna fall apart.
Correct. 227? Yeah, the, uh...
Counselor, are you talking about 227 or 228?
I'm referring to 227, but I'm talking about 228.
Okay.
Because you're, you're asking the city property to approve it, but it needs to go, we need to have the ASBILs. It has to go through our engineering department to say, yes, you can accept this street, it's acceptable.
Move to amend 22719 and 22819 to go to the Public Works Committee prior...
No, no need to amend, we just need to...
Send them.
To add that to the, uh, recommendation.
Send to Public Works Committee prior to, and, prior to the other committees.
And just so I can add, I'd be looking for the commissioner of Public Works to tell me, to tell me as the chair, yes, this...
Well, Counselor, before you hold that Public Works Committee meeting, the, or at the, at the meeting, the commissioner would have an opportunity to inform you in writing? You'd be comfortable with that, just leaving it as Public Works Committee with a communication?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Does that satisfy everyone's concerns?
Is it going to Public Works Committee?
So 22819 would now be sent to, um, Public Works Committee and Public, and City Property?
Or we could send it to City Property once, once it was approved through, either way it doesn't matter.
I think we should make a dual referral and just clean her that way.
Okay.
Uh, who made the initial, uh...
Me.
Comfortable with that?
Yes.
All right. Counselor Zarella.
I'd just like to note again, there's, there's no need for a motion. The, the president can just declare which committees, uh, it is, it stands referred to, uh, based on the recommendations and discussion.
Counselor Zarella, thank you. I have a motion and second to send 227 up to and including 23017 to their respective committees. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Motion carries.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
A motion and second to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, we adjourn. Thank you, Counselors.